Bring this meeting to order, the Amador County Board of Supervisors. We just came out of closed session and we approved the confidential minutes. They were the only things in closed session. Wouldn't mind standing for the Pledge Allegiance. Public matter is not on the agenda, discussion items only. No action will be taken. Any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction, Amador County Border Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report and recommendation for possible action at subsequent board meeting. Please note that there's a three-minute time limit.
Chairman, if I may to start, I was at an ACTC meeting last Thursday and I got a compliment from a frequent critic of the Public Works Department and he asked that I bring that up today so that everyone would know that as much as he beats them up when they do something right, he wants them to know about that. And it was former Supervisor John Plaz who lives on French Bar Road, is a frequent critic of the repairs that are done or not done or whatever. And he leaned over me, he goes, "I want to talk to you about French Bar Road." And I leaned back, wow, here we go. And he said, "You know, they did about 100 yards, tore it up, they didn't come back right away, but when they did, they finished the job and they did perfect." He goes, "As much as I condemn some of their work, they did a perfect job and I wanted everybody to know that." So, yeah, so I thanked him for them and I hope the public's worst guys that gets to them, I saw Jack. So, it has to go both ways, that was his theory, so.
That's it. Anybody else? Supervisors? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-zero. Consent agenda, anybody from the public want to talk about the consent agenda? Anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Move approval.
Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, five-zero again. We're on to regular agenda. General Services Administration, RFO 23-08, livestock grazing at Carbonale Business Park.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. John Hopkins, General Services Director. The agenda item you have there before you is the request for offers that we let out for leasing ground down at the property that's known as Carbonale Industrial Park, which is county-owned property, for a total of 171 acres. Turn it, turn it me up here a little bit?
Yeah.
There you go. Originally, we thought that there was 152 out there, but we had to make an adjustment. It's been about 14 years since we were out there doing this, or since we've done requests for offers for this lease, but it was time to do so. In regards to the offers that we received, you should have that in your packet, and we received three written offers, one from John Andrea for $39 an acre, one from Morgan Livestock at $59.15 an acre, and one from Cheryl Clark, who's the current leasing, or was the current leasing, at $50.53. In accordance with the government code, though, before you can accept any written offers, you have got to call for oral bids. And I know that I believe that there are two of those candidates here today, or should say bidders here today, that may want to address the board. When you do that, the first written offer has to be at least 5% greater than the written offer received, which I believe would amount to about $62.10. But at this time, I would turn it over to the chairman to ask the general public if there are any, any oral offers that need to be called for.
On the first oral bid?
First oral bid, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I will call for the oral bids. First bid needs to be at least $62.10. Come on forward to the speaker, the microphone, excuse me.
Cheryl Clark, and yes, I bid 62.
62.10.
62.10.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, do we hear anybody else?
I'm Rock Morgan, we would bid 62.50.
62.50.
Cheryl Clark again, 62. 75.
Thank you. 62.75.
63.
Sir, 63, even.
Told you we should have had S.C. for here. Quicker.
64.
E4.
65.
Five.
Six.
E6.
Seven.
E7.
When individuals come to the microphone, they should announce their name and their bid.
Yes, sir. Last one was from Brock, 67.
Cheryl, 68.
Cheryl, 68.
Ah, Rock, 70.
Okay. Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Oh, that's right, this had to be in public, I'm sorry. Oh, they can, okay. Anybody off of Zoom? Hey, calling once, calling twice? Sold.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like Mr. Morgan, Rock Morgan, has a final oral bid there for $70 an acre for Carbonale. That would conclude that. I would author, I would ask that the board give me direction to work with Mr. Morgan to get into a lease agreement for, and for you guys to approve the attached lease agreement for Carbonale Industrial Park.
That's for a five-year period, correct?
It's for a five-year term for 171 acres, yep.
And can, can that be sublet or not, without county approval?
Not without county approval.
Okay. I would so move to give staff that direction.
Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? E5.0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Item 2B, Presentation of 2022 Amador County Culture and Livestock Report.
Good morning, Chairman Brown, my name is Eric Mayberry, honorable members of the board. I am here, as you said, to present our crop report for 2022. So just remember, all the numbers that we're talking about are for the prior year. The gross production value for all agricultural commodities produced in 2022 was around 38 million, and this is a 15% decrease from the previous year's production value, due primarily to wine grapes and timber, which we will be talking about on a previous subsequent page. I just need to remind everybody that the, you know, the figures contained in the report represent gross values and vary grower to grower. So, like, for instance, the value of leased land in this county, you know, our report says $20, and you can see, in this case, we saw a $70 bid. So, for every $70, you know, acre, there's going to be one that's worth less than $20. So, I do wish to show some appreciation to all the growers that turned in their information on a timely basis so we can get this done. There are several organizations, public candidates, that we reach out to every year. And then, of course, my staff, especially Casey Wright, who compiled the report and she's with me, should I have questions. If we turn to the second page, you know, I'm going to kind of hit the highlights here. Wine grapes were down a lot. And as you probably recall, March of 2022, we had a large freeze. We had a, we obtained a disaster declaration from the state. 30% or so of the vineyards weren't even harvested, they just didn't even bother because there was nothing there to work with. But in addition to that, even if you were, let's say, the neighbor around the hill or whatever, that did get a crop and got, got your crop in, the price was lower than it was a previous year. So, you know, there really were no winners in 2022 for the grapes.
Did they get payments, though, from the government for crop loss?
So, that hasn't happened since I've been doing this job. During March, I, I visited a lot of the growers, spoke to them, I went to grape grower meetings, and that was the first question everybody asks. And the best you're going to get out of the government right now is a low-interest loan to help replant. And, and that low-interest loan has huge strings. The government requires, USDA requires that you have collateral. So essentially, you have to put all your equipment up, and they want to be first on the title. So, you know, if you, you know, you own John Deere Corporation or whoever for your tractor, you know, that's not going to fly. So, there are so many strings attached in the modern era that the kind of help that a lot of people assume that is available is no longer available to farmers. This is a high-risk operation. These people are, you know, literally risking their livelihoods, their homes, or whatever on these operations. And sometimes, at no fault of their own, you know, Mother Nature does come in there and wipes them out. It's really terrible.
Thank you.
Yeah, the walnuts went down quite a bit on that same page, but there's a small sample size, there's few growers in that category. There's more people planting walnuts and almonds in the future, so I would expect that that is something that we would see go up in the future.
The timeline for walnuts to be a producing crop?
You know, it depends on how small they are when you plant them, but a minimum of three years. Five is really what we expect. There's usually not enough nuts on the tree to, you know, bother renting the shakers and the sweepers and all that kind of stuff that is required.
I know a guy.
Also, if they're too thin, like the walnuts, they usually don't shake the whole trunk like they do the almonds, they just shake the arms. And, you know, when they're really thin or whatever, I mean, you're more likely to pull them out of the ground than you are to do anything, so. So they usually wait a couple of years until they're mature.
I know a guy that planted them about five years ago, he's sorry he ever put them in, based on the prices.
Yeah.
That's ag. That's ag.
It, it, it happens. I bought a house in Fresno some years ago, and I looked back in the records and they picked, they had planted prunes, and then they put in figs, and they, they put in grapes. And, you know, over the years, you can see what was popular over the different, you know, 70s, 80s, 90s, or whatever. For the, for the most part, I think that this region is lucky in that wine grapes have a tendency to be, only increase in value the older that they get, versus if you have almonds, let's say, you know, nonpareils maybe are really hot right now, but if you have buttes or carmel's or, like, most of the people up here at the dry farm, they do Hartley's and Francettes, right? Nobody uses those for many of the products nowadays, until they came out like peanut M&amp;M's and these really small ones, and then they become popular again. So, these are all commodities that suffer from market volatility quite a bit. Okay, the next page, field crops, I wanted to highlight, down in the lower right-hand corner, timber products, there was a large drop there, and I wish I had some analysis, but I, I do not. We get this number from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, so when they, you know, when they turn in their timber or whatever, it's taxed, and so they have a good count of everything that's sold. And we get the number directly from them, so we don't talk to any of the producers. But I, I have heard in the past that, you know, contracts do move from different areas, so maybe our area wasn't targeted for harvest this year, you know, the operations went to neighboring county, and hopefully it'll, it'll come back.
We had that Coward fire.
That, that, that might have been a factor, yeah. Sometimes after fires, they'll come back and want to harvest the wood while it's still standing, while it can get in there, but sometimes there's not a left, not a lot left standing. The next page, livestock and poultry, the cattle prices were up per head, $1,000 per head, which is fantastic. The weight was up a tiny bit, and the number of head pretty much stayed the same. So, mo, for the most part, the, the total value increase of about $4 million that you see there is attributed pretty much to the price per pound that the cattlemen get. We do have recapitulation on the next page, which is something that this board has been very interested in over the years, to be able to just compare the prior year in all the larger categories. And then, then we have a 10-year comparison on the next page with a graph that just pretty much shows what the overall production is. So, while we did have some increases, the timber and the grapes really pulled us down from this year, and it did put us on average for what we saw in, let's say, 2020, 2016, and 2017, but it's nowhere near, you know, what the high that we've seen in the last couple of years. We did do a page on weights and measures because of the, well, the number of pages you need to make, to make a booklet. So we, we threw an extra page in there on weights and measures, we don't do that every year, but it is something that our, our department does, and we do it to support not only the ag industry, but any, any other device that weighs, measures, or counts a commodity, we go out there and we check it every year. And then, the next page is Sustainable Ag Report, which is required by the Food and Ag Code that we put in there. In 2022, we, we just started switching over from an oblong spurge project to a product where we take care of Tree of Heaven, which is a preferred host for the spotted lantern fly, which is just now coming into the state. We're starting to see, not, not in this county, but like in Sacramento or wherever, we're finding the spotted lantern flies. And so, if we can control the number of locations where they live at, then we can trap them in the spots that are left. There's a lot of Tree of Heaven in this county, as it's been mentioned to me before by many people. And, you know, we probably don't have the, the resources to eliminate all of them, but we do have a program where we use a couple of different chemicals and, and two or three different methods, including an injection system, where we have a lance that injects a little brass capsule into the, into the cambium layer with a, with an herbicide that slowly kills it over time, that we're, we're trying out this year to be able to reduce the, the host population for that spotted lantern fly, should it inevitably come up to the.
They're pretty hard to kill, aren't they, that Tree of Heaven?
There's Tree of Heaven, we're finding to be very tough to kill. The photograph that you see in this report actually highlights that. So, there's a couple that you see in the foreground that are starting to get a little crispy and brown and dying a little bit, but as you can see, the ones kind of, that are behind that are just doing fine. So, a lot of times, we're finding that subsequent treatment is, is required. They're, they're tough, they're tough.
They don't even make good firewood.
They smell kind of funny when you burn them, don't they?
Yeah, it's just, kind of, I guess there's a reason for it, but it's kind of a junk tree.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we would like to kill all of them, and we encourage the public, if they have them on their property, to, to remove them, they, they really are not great trees. We have organic production, direct marketing on that last page, and that is pretty much it. So I've gone through the whole report, but I'm sure that as we went through there, I spotted something that you maybe had some questions about, I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Anything for the board?
Yes.
Supervisors.
Just kind of curious, how often you see any of the old scales or measuring devices out of calibration, I guess you might say?
So, it depends on the device. So, the ones that we have most interest about is gas stations, let's be honest. We get a lot of complaints about the gas stations. We probably receive a half dozen to a dozen complaints per year, and when we go back and follow up on those, about half of those, you know, there's an issue where we have to tag them out one way or the other. So, you know, again, I don't have the stats with me because I didn't think about it, but, you know, probably a handful, maybe four or five per year that we, we have to red-tag out, but that would usually be, it won't be a whole station. It'll be like one pump added, like 10 or whatever. If the whole station was predominantly out in the favor, not of the customer, but of the business or whatever, then we would shut down the whole thing, and we've never had to do that in this county. I think that, the, the, the larger concern at this time for the gas station industry on that is the rampant use of skimmers that are stealing people's credit card information. And there's also a new device that, that the scammers are using that installs it into the machine that allows people to change the price for themselves, so they'll change it to like a penny a gallon, and they'll just, you know, empty the gas tank, right? Usually those are like the 24-hour, you know, the big 24-hour ones, so they can do a lot of gallons before they get caught or whatever. But there, there are a little many computers now, so they're subject to fraud.
My question is, I turned in a complaint to you from a constituent about invasive weed.
Yes.
Did you ever have a chance to go take a look?
Could you remind me which?
I want to say it was up on Ridge Road, there was, I forget what it was right now.
It was, that was an email, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, we did. Did I not respond to you on the email, or did I respond directly to that guy?
I think you responded directly to him, because I.
Yeah, I, I will follow up this week, I'll, I'll make a note of it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Well, thank you, Eric, for.
Thank you, board. Have a great day.
Thank you. Okay, on to 2C, Elections Department, Discussion on Possible Action Relative Ordinance relating to adoption of electronic filing requirement for campaign finance disclosures.
We'll see if they are going to come present, otherwise I can answer any questions for this. Or you can skip it and come back.
We want to skip on. Okay. Next one. Okay, we'll go on to 2D, Board Supervisors, Discussion on Possible Action Relative to the Appointment of Primary and Alternate Delegate for the 2023-2024 CSAC Board of Directors. Note, Supervisor Forrester is the current primary delegate, Supervisor Brown serves as the alternate.
They both want to serve in that capacity again?
Well, I'd like to do it one more year, since that'll be my, my swan song.
Swan song, yeah, of course. I'm fine with it.
Good.
I'm fine with it.
Appreciate that. Supervisor Brown?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all good.
I'd make a motion that we approve Forrester's a primary delegate and Brown as alternate.
Second.
Do we have any public comment? Anybody from Zoom? Oh, we don't have a Zoom-controlled person. I don't see any hands up. Okay, I'm, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that's five-zero. View and Possible Approval of September 26, 2023, Board Supervisors Meeting Minutes.
No approval. Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we'll take a couple minutes here to.
Let her go get them. Donnie.
Could take a break and come back at 10:20.
Could take a break and come back at ten twenty uh right before the uh the public hearing so we get five into our ten fifteen and.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yep sure.
Okay we'll we'll be in oh I said.
Well you can bid some more now. Bye bye.
Thanks for making making the me- the meeting exciting.
We appreciated it. We've approved both two D and two E just for your knowledge.
Okay thank you.
Elections is coming down now?
Elections is.
Okay and then we'll.
Kim is on her way right who's on the way?
Uh Ms. Machado from elections is on her way.
Okay. Now we know you're new but you gotta sit there you put stuff before us you gotta be here.
Sorry.
Just teasing. So if you wouldn't mind explaining the uh what's going on for.
Um the item before you today is in order to take electronic filings.
Okay.
Um it is something that several counties across the nation do now in order to preserve records better but in order to be convenient for both the filer and the filing so um this will allow um all of your campaign statements for all candidates so that is um all of your annual semi-annual filings but also pre-elections um that are due um those will be also be able to file electronic along with your seven hundreds so the seven hundred is a big piece for the county um that is something that we file for all of the employees besides all of the districts um so that will allow um everybody to file electronically so that will be able to have a workflow in order to send everybody an email so instead of me sending a courtesy um email to you you will get electronic email from the system reminding you okay you have a filing due whether it's um a pre-election filing or just your annual seven hundred depends on what um filer has set up in their record.
You said they this allows them to do it but it's a mandatory isn't it?
Well it once we said the ordinance yes we will have to receive electronically so I know some of um our eighty-seven two hundred filers already file electronically um but this will allow the employees um along with all the other special districts who file seven hundreds but it'll also allow the campaign statements to file electronically now the or sixties you can still file paper wise but the seven hundred will become an electronic filing.
I'd like it better if it allowed you to do electronically not made you do electronically.
If we do you know if we approve this then it'd be mandatory correct?
For the seven hundred yes.
For the seven hundreds.
Only for that one?
Yes that is the 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 mandatory the the campaign statements have their different rules because of file retention um but the seven hundred the conflict of interest code um does become electronic.
How come it says here adoption of an ordinance is not required for the use of an electronic filing system for form seven hundreds?
It does state that.
Uh huh on the bottom page thirty-three the the memo on the la- the uh second to last paragraph.
Okay I'm sorry I would have to review that.
I I I think that this form does so if you if you look at um I could show you too it just says it says uh.
Wired.
One point zero one oh four oh any elected officer candidate committee or other person required to file statements reports or other documents required by the political political reform act um shall file those statements reports or other documents um online basically so I I think this is this ordinance is for the um the campaign financing because I don't think you need an ordinance for.
For the seven.
Seven hundred forms but the seven hundred forms in conjunction with this will also move electronic.
But the four sixty will still not be mandatory to do it electronically you can still do it by paper.
The four sixty is the campaign.
Campaign.
Yeah the way the way I read this it it is it says shall file those statements reports or other documents electronically so I think it's required.
But that's scanning and then loading it up into the system.
It's actually entering data into the system.
Okay.
I don't like that at all I like doing mine by paper.
Okay.
I'm not gonna vote for this do we have to is it required by state law?
But uh you can take your paper one and scan it right and file that correct?
No that's what you that's what I just asked and that's.
That's a yes or?
Now I got a no out of that.
I guess we need to.
You have the data entry.
Why don't we hold this?
It says authorized doesn't say required but um I don't know I have to probably read.
Yeah because my my form seven hundred has like a whole extra sheet that I add and it's a little complicated so I just.
Oh I believe that there is there is fields that you would enter that in.
It's way too many fields standards like five pages of stuff.
It would keep your profile of that information.
Given this is this is not your seven hundred.
Okay.
This is the campaign.
Oh okay.
If you uh received contributions totaling less than two thousand dollars uh it does not apply.
Okay.
So I guess the way I guess purpose get my mind back the way he's reminding me right now that it is for the campaign side you don't have to do it for the seven hundred but it'll allow the whole system I guess for us to be implement.
But it makes it mandatory electronic filing for the four sixty.
For the campaign side.
For the four sixty for the campaign side.
Yes.
I don't mind if somebody wants to do it electronically it's fine but I don't like I don't like mandating if somebody has to.
But you don't.
Oh it says also here that may require so I don't think it's something that we have to do necessarily is that correct Greg?
Well I I'm just going through it right now and and so subsection C says in any instance in which an original which an original statement report or other document must be filed with the secretary of state so I don't know which what that triggers.
Well that's for local offices only the four ten is filed directly with this.
It says uh the filer may elect to file the copy with the registrar voters in paper format or through the registrar of voters electronic filing system so perhaps it is both or alternative given the uh the questions here I think we should.
We can bring it back and have.
Push it back in two weeks.
Hey does anybody have any problem with that bringing it back?
No.
You're okay with that? Okay we'll postpone this so we.
Thank you.
Get a update.
I do apologize I was actually with um in the middle of the system training right now trying to learn more about it because um I do apologize I came from a district that did not do the seven hundreds within its election department so the seven hundred is is something in my twenty years experience I do not have and I am actually trying to learn more and more every day so I do apologize.
I appreciate you trying to learn more.
I thank.
Thank you.
Thank you hey this item two C is postponed till next board meeting and so we are in recess till ten thirty. Okay we'll bring the meeting back to order we're working on three A on public hearing consideration of planning commission's recommendation to approve their request for zoning change from R one A single family residence and agricultural zoning district to AG exclusive agricultural zoning district in conjunction with a request to establish two new CLCA contract consisting of four hundred and forty-four acres and seven hundred and nineteen acres and I'm not gonna read all the APNs and there we go.
Mr. Chair board members.
Morning.
Beatty with the planning department so the the applicants in this uh application they are requesting a zone change for this eleven hundred and sixty-three acres and they're gonna uh put it into two separate uh Williamson Act contracts um when the ag advisory committee reviewed it they had no objection uh uh because it more than met the qualifications to uh for agricultural contracts um and then it went before the planning commission last last month uh planning went planning commission also recommended approval of the zone change which is a requirement to get into the Williamson Act that's how we regulate um the difference between property that's in versus property that's out of the uh of the Williamson Act that has its own zoning district normally when uh a property moves from an the existing ag district into the Williamson Act district it's categorically exempt from SEQA because the uses don't change this property is currently all R one A so there is the potential for increased uh uses but we've what we've done um with this contract with these contracts and a couple of prior contracts is those contracts would still require the conditional use permit in the future if someone wanted to do the more intense land uses that way we can still process movement into the Williamson Act of a categorically exempt act as far as SEQA is concerned.
What would be the more intense uses?
Tasting rooms event centers.
Okay.
Those are two that would come to mind.
All right. Any other questions to the board?
Nope.
Okay open up public hearing anybody want to come for the board? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Move.
Call for the vote all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay back to the board for discussion.
I'll uh make the motions to adopt the resolutions approving the California Land Conservation Act contracts number four five nine and number four six zero authorize board chair to sign the resolution and contracts and adopt an ordinance approving the zone change from R one A single family residential and agricultural district to the AG exclusive agricultural district for the subject parcels and also include the recommended findings.
Second.
Hey call for the vote all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Thank you very much we're on to three B consideration of planning commission's recommendation to approve a request for a variance from the front twenty-five feet yard setback uh required to allow construction of a detached garage ten feet from the property line.
Good morning Nicole Shepherd with the planning department um the applicant Lisa Saunders has requested a variance from the Amherst County Code chapter nineteen point twenty-four oh four oh R one district regulations generally this code requires a twenty-five foot standard setback from the front property line for all structures this variance if approved would allow the construction of a detached garage ten feet from the property line um the technical advisory committee reviewed the project on July twentieth twenty twenty-three and had no technical objection to the project um it was then forwarded to the Amherst County Planning Commission where um they recommended approval of the project along with finding it exempt from SEQA under section one five three oh five class five of the state SEQA guidelines um following the public hearing the board uh may determine the adequacy of the proposed notice of exemption under SEQA as well as then approve or deny the proposed variance.
Hey anything from the board? It looks like there's no opposition so. The one thing that I I brought up to Chuck Beatty was um as we're bringing this closer to property line you know we've done this in various you know Kirkwood and all the rest of these and I'm afraid of our um transportation folks can we bring down the mic just a little bit thank you um one of the biggest problems I'm seeing is that if we we've had some good snow years the last couple of years and if we're plowing this our snow are we gonna be damaging any of the um property you know their stuff so I'm wondering if down the road we should be talking about a variance to allow our own transportation they would not be held liable for you know standard snow operations at least in the high country so that's not something we can really talk about here but I just wanted to point that out.
Seems like now's the time to talk about it.
Okay.
Can we add that as a finding?
Possibly although and we don't know anything about what what I mean what the right of way is what the road is I mean it it gets a little murky when you say like so yes maybe could but then um you know if a if a snow plow.
Well what I'm.
I mean cause I mean you could say well that there are situations where you sign a release and if something beyond the normal happens the release is no good anyway um.
Cause my thought on behind is is you know during last last January.
Um, cause my thought on behind is, is, you know, during last, last January, you know, we had, in the Mace Meadows area, you know, we had four foot of snow, it had frozen up and there was a lot of ice that was up there. And if normal snow operations are happening, you know, you can build a pretty good berm of snow up there. During Kirkwood, they had, they ran out of places to put snow. So as they're pushing the snow somewhere, you know, my, my thought process on this is that, is it, cause they're building it so close to the edge, on normal snow operations, you know, can this damage their facility? If, if a, a snow plow actually ran into the building, that's a different story. But I'm just talking about, you know, normal snow operations and ice, you know, moving across where it is.
So is 10 feet from the property line, is that to the edge of the road, 10 feet?
Not normally. I, I don't know, I don't know if there's a right of way or dedicated right of way, do you know?
No, off the top of my head, no.
I, I mean, to get into these issues, we'd have to send it back. I don't, I don't know that we can answer this. I mean, theoretically, we could, well, well, to be honest, I don't know if that's a, a legal condition.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're making them, we're, we're making give, give up something that other, other property owners don't have to give up. Um.
But they're far enough away from the edge.
Well, yeah, but, well, maybe. I don't know what the, I, I don't know what.
I'll pull it, I would just, I don't want to stop this from happening. I was just mainly, I just wanted to question it more or less than anything else, that's for.
And I think what Greg is alluding to too is, you know, we, we put snow places, but if you get right down to it, technically, where could you put that snow? Legally.
But as normal operations, we're just plowing it along, you know, we're not.
I understand that.
You know, so we're just pushing it up on person's property.
Exactly.
Well, we just leave it as this, hey, but you might want to have this looked at in the future when, when you approach these kind of situations.
That's what I'm kind of looking for. If you just. I think if, if, if we see these upcountry in the future, maybe we check in with Public Works as to whether this is an issue for them.
Agreed.
Will do, thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this? Yes, sir. Morning.
Larry White, any of you don't know me, Larry White from Byng Grove, I represent the Saunders. I don't know if you have in your packet the actual drawing that we have, but the edge of pavement to the property line is like 15 feet, something like that. And they're still going to use, continue to use the existing driveway, um, to access the, the thing. So your concern in this particular instance, I don't think would be a concern.
And, and that's fine, you know, my biggest, I.
I just don't want these folks to lose, lose this because of your concern right now.
And I, and I'm not either. You know, and I'm not, not pushing for that for myself either. I'm just, the biggest thing that I'm, you know, I know in Mace Meadows, you know, cause I live in that area.
Right.
There's just some, you know, there's downhill areas.
Right.
And then you're plowing it and then it's just going right off the edge and I can see an ice ball rolling down the hill.
Right, and we all know in the upcountry area that we put our vehicles in four-wheel drive to get out of our driveways, to get past the berm that the plow is put.
That's it.
That's pretty much.
Yeah, I think it's 17 feet.
If anybody has any questions, um, I'm available.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna go back to the back of the class. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody off of Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Move. Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, five zero. Back to the board for discussion.
Make a motion then to approve the requests for the variance from, uh, in the front, um, property line from 25 feet to 10 feet to allow construction of a attached, attached garage and approve the, um, the recommended findings.
Second.
And call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Okay, this meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, October 24th at 9:00 AM. Closed session begins at 8:30.